Good evening, everyone, welcome to your town hall meeting. Glad to see everyone come out tonight and see what goes on with your town and protect your town. If you'd all please stand.
Let us pray. Most holy eternal, everlasting Father, again we come to you as humble as we know our Lord. First of all, thank you for all the many blessings of the Lord for being with us this day, Lord, keeping us in your keep and care. And now, Lord, we just after your will coming to the mission right now, Lord, remove self out of the way, Lord, for us to make the decision for our town, Lord. When all these things are said and done, we will be so careful to give your name the praise, the glory, and the honor. For it's in Jesus' name we pray, thank God for Almighty Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me get a couple of calls. Mayor Randy Weaver. Here. Mayor Brooklyn Becky Humphrey.
Here.
Commissioner Randall Colley.
Here.
Commissioner Mary Jackson.
Yes.
Commissioner David Frye.
Here.
Commissioner Beverly Davis.
Here.
Town Administrator Blake Proctor.
Here.
Town Attorney Brian Friggin.
Here.
Let me get a couple of calls. Some house things here before we get started, please. I had some sad news come to me, I believe, yesterday or Sunday, through the mama former commissioner Raymond Moore. That was on this board, served me two times, I know. He passed away this weekend. Mr. Moore was a longtime resident of County Schlossberg, and just goes all around town. I think he'll really be missed. His funeral tomorrow at 2:00 P.M. Tomorrow at 2:00 P.M. will be his funeral. Everybody go and attend that. I'm sure the family will appreciate it. Wila Woodley, Wila Woodley, 2:00 P.M. Also, if you got your cell phones, I know how important they are to everybody. I've got mine on vibrate, if you would, please, put your phones on vibrate on you. I think we can get along well out of court, short time of night. We'll see if text pop up if it's really important. And anyone who wishes to speak, when we get to that part of the agenda on consent, I mean, excuse me, petition. If you're just your mama when you signed up, or down your left, if you have not. We just ask that you keep it to a three-minute minimum so that the board is going to address your issue or what have you. And you, for your time, will respond back to two of them that signed. You just be fair to each one, keep it calm, please. We'll try to keep out of the response, okay? Thank you very much. Nine to five on the agenda, Mr. Proctor, do we have anything of recognition?
Uh, no, sir.
Do not.
Um, don't, don't, we're supposed to have those two employees hurt today? Okay, we'll, we'll, I think we'll get new employees at the next season.
All right, hold on a minute. I had to seek was presentations, any presentations?
Promises, sir.
I had to serve was petition communications. Thanks, sir. Let me keep that question. I have Mr. Ricardo Do. Mr. Do.
Yes, sir, if, if, if you please, I would like to go last, I just happened to be the first person to come in, so that's why I signed up. I'll let you go at the end of the conference.
I give you three minutes to the end, okay?
Yes, sir.
I have a, I believe, Ms. Perry.
Patrice Perry.
Ma'am.
Patrice.
Patrice Perry, yes, ma'am, Ms. Perry.
Patrice Perry, 6234 Pine Hill Road, Anne Springs.
I got it.
On July 15th of this year, at 9:45, I was stopped by the Schlossberg Police Officer T. Morton. Came to my car, told me he pulled me over because my driver's side headlight was out. Then he proceeded to ask me for my driver's license. Two minutes later, came and told me my tags were dead, and he had to call the police service to my car. I asked the officer if I could call my own tow, and also explained to him that I got insurance from the business. Showed my insurance papers. I did show him my insurance card, then he told me that, may know, and that he was seeing where the car was to insure, but his chief said that they had called records. Called the record they wanted. So about 10 minutes later, the driver's record came, told me very rudely to me, you get out of my car. So I called out, and he tells me that he would have told my car for $75 to my house. Or it was going to the shop, and it would be $35 a day plus the $75. I have, I have since then spoken to the chief with no such help. When I was pulled over, I pulled into parking lot of Speedway Gas Station. And after employee inside, if I could leave my vehicle there for about an hour, I'll meet somebody to tow it on a tow truck to my house. The police were not allowing me, said, no, the chief said they call who they want to call. Okay, so like I said, the next day I called the chief, you know, such help, so I called the Raleigh. Because he says it's the state law, that's what the chief told me. So I called the Raleigh the next day and asked. And they told me, no, there's no, there's no such law, there's laws to be in the book, that they, that I had to write to call who I wanted to call. But I was not able to do that. So that was July 15th. This is August, was it September the 12th? My, I, I'm a single parent, I, like I told you, I, I'm not saying y'all should be in the road, but like I told, I offset that time, I had, my dad bought the car for me. I was getting home. And I, and like I said, I was calling, I was going to call somebody to pull on the other record. But no, the chief said they get called who they want to. My car been up there in the store for over a month. Going to call me, go and get the car out, didn't call work. You know what I mean?
What was your, what was he charged?
He said he stopped me, okay, he said he stopped me for my light being out. But he wrote a ticket saying I didn't have no insurance, I got proof, I got insurance. I read the card, they threw it out. You know, but, but, and then when he wrote the ticket, he wrote the ticket for a car that ain't mine. You know what I mean, the ticket, I only take, the car he got, it was the ticket, it's not my car. And he said I had no insurance, so I got proof, I called, but I got home that night, I called the insurance company, they faxed. He said, okay, well, this is happening, July 15th, your insurance is taken out. You been having insurance ever since the sixth month, which is January 15th. So I had insurance, and I showed him the paper. Matter of fact, like he said, I called, I went to the insurance company, and bet like a call, like he was there, you know, the verse, I went to the insurance lady, okay, I knew y'all taking out the check. Before I get my money, y'all took it out. So I had insurance, and I showed him that, but like I said, he wrote the ticket saying I didn't have no insurance.
You had insurance, so now you have to stop?
Yeah.
You got proof for that?
I got proof right now.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, how can I reach you?
Okay, 252-289-5186.
289?
Yeah, 289-5186.
5186. And it's?
Patrice Perry.
All right, thank you, Ms. Perry.
Ms. Perry, I understand, I understand. I, I have a question, maybe I misunderstood when you were, were speaking. You said your father bought you the car, and you were trying to get it to your house.
Yeah, my mom bought the car for her cousin, and it even, so it was, he bought it, but I had, I was on the call, they had the insurance on. So I needed some work to move to the car. So you not, you didn't, I, you didn't get the car home, and then you come home. But like I said, I had insurance, they bought the car for her cousin. I finished you a call, you not to call and add your insurance on, so I had it added on.
That was my question.
I didn't have my tag, I just said that, and I never told this officer, this my tag, but I knew it was not right. But like I told, I didn't ask him to let me drive the car home, I was going here and there, I said, let the car stay here, and I'm going to call somebody to pull it. You know, our chief said we call who we want to call.
So your tag was expired?
The tag was, the tag was here, the car was bought from my cousin, the car, the tag was in her name, you know what I mean?
That clarifies that. My, my other question is, um, why didn't you go pick up your car the next day?
Okay, you know, when he paid, when he had go into the ATM, we get $75, I went, the ATM gonna give me $75? But they ain't got it, didn't have, I can't get it, but I ain't got it.
But?
I had money, but they didn't have it by me car.
So you didn't have the $35 to go get it?
Seventy-five, you want $35, seventy-five dollars at night, it was on Saturday.
And then $35 day that you left it?
Seventy-five dollars for birthday, and $35 every day, plus the seventy-five.
Okay, thank you.
Let me talk with Commissioner Colley, Police Commissioner Colley. And Chief Humphrey.
And I will.
I have a Deborah Etheridge. Miss Etheridge.
I said, March 19th, Bond Street, in South. On May the 19th, 2017. Okay, my daughter called Wilson County Sheriff Department, but her call was transferred to Schlossberg Department for domestic violence. Okay, when I was a grand, we told her everything's all right, he said he won't go nowhere because he got a call for this. Okay, then he told my daughter, because he didn't use her ID right, and so we went, uh, went in the house, get her ID, she couldn't find it. And, um, somehow the officer came in behind her and went in the bathroom. And, um, we couldn't find her ID, so when she couldn't find it, she ran out the back door, front door, anyway. And, um, when she, she ran off around the way to lock her office, when she ran out the door. Okay, um, when she ran out the door, they couldn't, uh, he had called the back door again. When he called the back door, uh, they couldn't catch him. So when they came out in the house, and he came back up and knocking on the door, and I had locked the door, he said, since I can't get you, I don't like your daughter for, for the, as for what I did do there. So they locked me up.
For the charge?
For assault on Roman Fish, and I had him touch that me, it was on, uh, assault on Brian.
Have you been to court?
No, I got lawyer doing it. Then, um, July the 24th, uh, 17th, I was charged with the same charge again, locked up again. For the same charge. But they let me out because I asked the manager, well, how can he charge me for the same charge? He said, ask the officer that locked me up, he didn't know what was going on, but the chief know what was going on.
But I say, have you been to court?
Yeah, I got lawyer doing for that, but I got paid all this money out for something I didn't do.
Can I ask a question? Is that okay if I ask?
Yes, please.
Um, who was the original domestic violence called on?
She needs, she had called for Wilson County, and somehow it got transferred to Schlossberg Police.
But who was, who was the domestic violence with, her and you?
Her, her, no, her and her boyfriend.
Her and her boyfriend?
Yes.
Now, did his boyfriend leave, did her boyfriend leave the scene?
No, he was there.
He was there?
He recorded everything where he had me handcuffed, tied my, uh, wrist real tight when letting me go.
Okay, why did she run?
Because she said she had no right, didn't have no ID. And at that time, she couldn't find, because I went back in the bedroom, look here, trying to hear her find the ID, we couldn't find. Then the officer came out, he ain't no right in my house anyway, I didn't ask him to come in there for the first time. When she ran out the door, that's when he came back.
How can I reach you? 4574? I have a Miss, um, I think. Nana.
Etheridge.
Is that Etheridge?
Barbara.
Vance, Vance Etheridge.
It's Barbara.
Is that right?
It probably is Barbara Etheridge.
Who says Vance Etheridge?
Oh, you say you have her tag?
No.
I think what happened, some people signed in, because they thought they had to sign the end, go into the meeting.
Oh, okay, okay. So, Miss Vane, speak, right?
Yes, he's here, he don't want to talk.
I'm just listening.
That's you?
Right.
You don't want to speak to the board?
No, no, I'm good. I'm just listening.
You just thought, you just thought this, I had him come in?
Yes, he was told.
I'm staying, I'm staying. Then I got a Ms. Carolyn Etheridge. Carolyn.
Good evening.
Hey.
My name is Carolyn Etheridge, Etheridge is the fourth, 6733 Reed and Branch Road, Rockland, Rockland, Alabama. And on May the 19th, I got a very disturbing call from my daughter Deborah. So I goes up to see what was going on, when I get there, the Schlossberg Police had, had her in handcuffs. And so as I got out of the car, our chief went to yelling and hollering, get back, ma'am, get back! That was a no work post to him. So I didn't go nowhere to him, but he was very disrespectful. So I turned and went in the house, and then, when I went in the house, he stopped his, whoever he is, the other police, to go inside, because they had lost their body cam. So he went in, and he got it, and I just stood there and watched, that's what I have to say.
Is this the same call that, that was with Deborah Etheridge, right?
Yes, I'm the mother, she called me, I was at home, and I came up to see what was going on.
And your, your address is what, Miss Ether?
Say by there.
What was your address?
Uh, 6733.
33.
Uh-huh, Reed and Branch Road.
Well, let me investigate this with Commissioner, and when I talk to Ms. Deborah Etheridge, she can relate to you, it'll be okay. I'm going to be abusing me in the morning.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Then I have, that was her, right? No, right here, here, on the six. Carolyn. Barbara, Ms. Barbara Etheridge. Right, okay. Trying to keep them in order, thank you.
Hi, how you doing?
Hey.
Okay, my name is Barbara Etheridge, and I went to, um, Schlossberg Police Office, no, I went to the Schlossberg Police Office on January 27th, 2017. The reason was, the reason to speak with Lynette, that he been an officer. And we get all the way in, we get all the way in, and the chief stopped us at the, at the door. Me and Cheryl, Cheryl Randolph, and we were asking the chief about Lynette, why was Lynette, um, had associate workers, um, take the child out of the home. Before we can speak about the situation. Okay, before we can, okay, before we can speak about the situation, he told us to leave. While we leave, my son was at the car wash, and she told my son, don't bring your A over here, I will arrest, arrest you for trespass. And we was put, we was, he was putting her in his tie, and the chief yelled out the one, using arm and his word. Okay, and we, okay, we was leaving the car wash, heading on 301, no, we, we turn and take the seat, the parking lot, the chief got out of his Jeep, and Cheryl Randolph. Um, Cheryl, uh, Randolph, he told Cheryl Randolph to get it out of the car. And he, um, snatched her out of the car, while her seatbelt, she was trying to get her seatbelt off. And, um, and, uh, snatched her on the car, and the car, her foot was still on the, um, on the brake, and I had to, um, get up on the other side, the national brake, get in the other officer's car.
And when was this, Miss?
Um, January 27th, 2017.
So we're talking nine months ago?
Uh-huh.
Why not just hear it?
Oh, she got a lawyer. But she's not here today because she had to be at work, that I have a statement to, because I'm on her witness, because we was together.
So you're speaking for her?
Uh-huh, and me, because I was here too, I was in, um, in her car at the time he sat. And then when I got out of the car, he, he was very ugly towards me.
And what was her name?
Uh, Cheryl, uh, Randolph.
Cheryl?
Uh-huh, Cheryl.
Last name?
It's, um, M.A.M.O.S.
M.A. So that is M.A.?
Uh, it's M.A.M.O.S. Your name is Cheryl.
M.A.M.A.
Rainmoss.
Rainmoss. R.M.A.M.O.S.
R.A.M.O.S.
All right, now that makes a little better. Okay. You tell me Rainmoss, I like to hear from her. Okay. She's the one that tang the law?
Uh.
You said she has a tang the law?
Yeah, she have a, she have a lawyer.
I like to hear from her, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Parker, I believe this is Ms. Parker.
Red Lake.
What's your first name?
Bertha.
Bertha, Bertha Parker.
Chief, chief had a complaint too.
I'm just bringing your name, okay? Where do you live, Ms. Parker?
I live at 125 B Street in Schlossberg.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, September the 8th, okay, Officer Bruce. My grandson and Daquan Clark, they were riding over there in Tyree Hind yard. Uh, the one boy had four wheeler, and my grandson had two, uh, dirt bike. Okay, um, what's her name? Pat, I mean Bruce, Officer Bruce, he came in Tyree Hind yard and told the other boys on the four wheeler that he can leave. Said, I already got you, now I got to get Sid. And so the other boy left on the four wheeler, came to my house, and told me that they got Sid down there, and that, that they made him push that bike into the streets. And Tyree Hind, where they was playing at, told, came out and told Bruce to get out of his yard. And so then, on September the 8th, Officer McNeil told me to go down there to Mike Taylor. To find out how much they charged him to get the dirt bike back. And so I got down there, Mike Taylor, he were real nasty. He were real nasty. And I walked out, I said, how much you gonna charge me to get your dirt bike back? First of all, they ain't got no ticket or no nothing. They just had him to push the bike into the street. And then when I got there, Bruce and the other worker told me to go up there and talk to the chief. I went up there, tried to talk to the chief. And they was lying, saying that chief won't be back in until Tuesday. And so then, I finally, uh, went down to Mike Taylor, he were real nasty, and I said, how much can I charge, how much you gonna charge me, so I can get that dirt bike back? He said, chief told me to hold it for evidence, but we don't have, he didn't give no tickets. Had the boy push the bike in the road. And told us to go up there, talk to the chief, and then the chief, they want to talk to us.
Was he, um, before we, uh, writing, I didn't know, I called about, about the code on River France?
Now, that was a different one.
Was he riding on, at River France?
Now, that, we, we, then we was trouble. At Tyree Hind, I was his friend. And then, the other boys came out and trying to start, talk there and tell me what was going on, they told you to make them shut up, so you gotta shut up, I ain't got nothing to do with this.
How can I reach you, Ms. Parker?
Uh, 252-885-4007.
885?
4007.
Zero seven?
Yes, sir, and I don't have no ticket. But me and Bruce had run in before, so I'm technically taking all this out on you. My grandson is, you know, me.
Okay.
And, and I don't think you like that.
Let me talk, I ain't going that route. Let me talk with, uh, chief and Commissioner, I'll be back.
Ms. Parker, can I ask you, how old is your grandson that was riding the bike?
He's 14, he's, he's a good student, he's not into a whole lot, he just love it, dirt bike. He just love it, dirt bike, no problem at school, no nothing. Yeah, every time go up there, try and talk to, she, she send a message about, out to somebody, to somebody else. And very nasty attitude, I don't, we need something that we can, we know to be so pure on. We need somebody to talk to instead of calling Wilson County next time. We need somebody that we can pin on in Schlossberg. Amen? On our side. And every time I put my car, Mike Taylor don't like nobody. I don't want nothing mind go down to Mike Taylor's. So Mike Taylor about to go out of business, but they got everybody cars and trucks, turning it down to Mike Taylor trying to bring their business back up. I went to Mike Taylor, trying to get the boy dirt bike back, the same day, I got talked up to by Mike Taylor and the chief.
Okay, well, that's going to be between you and Mike Taylor, now he's a businessman, uh, I cannot represent him and hear, he can, he represent himself.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to go to my head, yeah. Now, I already got more on the dirt bike.
I've got a...
Now, I already got more on the dirt bike.
Now, how about Ms. Jenkins, Jenkins?
Come on, say it, that's you. You have a tow store. You got the, you got the?
Now, it's the same thing, I need to hear twice.
Okay.
I got your contact information. What's your first name, Ms. Jenkins?
Sandra. Sandra. Sandra, Sandra Jenkins.
Okay, I'm going to check you off, Ms. Jenkins. Number nine, blank, I said, I thought it was, I wasn't that on the team.
And they said they was holding it for evidence. With court, and we don't have court date, we don't have nothing.
Okay, I own that?
I know.
I've got a, um... Cornelius?
Carmelos.
Sir?
Carmelos.
Cornelius?
Carmelos.
What's your last name, sir?
Dan, C.D.A.N.C.
Dan, okay.
All right, I'm not just from, uh, Schlossberg, but I'm here in support of, uh, Ms. the chief.
Ms., Ms. Patrice Perry?
Yes. Uh, I received a phone call from her, um, trying to get some information about her incident. And so I told her to call the police department, and, and ask to speak to the chief. And, um, she called several times, couldn't give him, she called me back. So I asked her, did she have a male figure, a husband, or a boyfriend, or someone that she could get to call? Uh, she said her brother called, uh, he still didn't respond. So I called, and when I called, I talked to some female, I, I got all this stuff documented, I didn't break the night, because I didn't really come to speak, but just to see what was going on. Um, but I, I, I called in, I still put the email, asked her for, um, your call suit and procedures for the police department, and nobody has responded, and Timmy don't have an email. But I also did receive a phone call from the chief, and he left a voicemail, I have that voicemail. And in the voicemail, he, um, to me, he was very rude, uh, he said, pressing you, uh, 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 trying to support. And he went on, he said, you didn't talk to me, I did what I was supposed to do, but that's not the way he should have handled it, I mean, I, I, right then, I was turned off, I didn't even want to come and talk to him. But I know at some point in time, I may would, because I, I, I do think I said, um, I was a member of the NWC, and I really think that's why he actually called me back, because they kept saying he was out of town. And I don't care about being out of town, you still have a phone, a cell phone, that's where he called me from, he didn't call me from the City Hall members. So I didn't understand that, but that lady need to get her car, because she did not need that video. So like I said, I, 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 I don't know what happened, he, he tell me he had on video and all that kind of stuff, but we would have got to that point. But I do not like his attitude in the voicemail that he left me, and if he treated me like that, I could imagine, not saying he would have. But how he may have talked to a female, and I have a serious problem when it comes to that. So, um, uh, and he may have video or whatever, and I would love to have came and sit down and talk to him, I'm not doing it through the NWC at this point in time. I am the Legal Regis Dress Chair for Etron County, I am the sacrifice president, but I'm not here tonight on behalf of NWC, I'm here on behalf of Carmelos Danzes. But I'm not here tonight on behalf of N W C P, I'm here on behalf of Carmelus Dancys, or Carmela Actives, and in support of Ms. Patrice. All I want to know is, if he follows the correct process, I want to make sure he follows the policy procedures. If he's correct, that's fine, if he's not, then I just want justice, that's all I want, thank you.
Well, let me get that, let's say with Dan, and I'll get back, Ms. Perry, on Ms. Patrice Perry, okay?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are you a relative of Ms. Patrice?
Does it matter? Does it matter? Does it matter?
She just asked.
But I'm, I'm asking, does it matter?
No, I just, I was just wondering.
It doesn't matter.
I was wondering why, you know, you were representing.
I just said I was a community activist, and I am a member of the N W C P, second vice president, and I'm the legal redress chair. Is that, do you need any more, any more?
Any more clear, no, you don't need.
I don't think I need to make this any more clear.
Ms. Cheryl O'Neal. Ms. Dab, we'll hear her right back.
Good evening.
Hey.
Uh, my name is Cheryl O'Neal, I'm two oh four, Beaumont Hill Street. And, um, I'm not here to complain about the officers, but I do have, have another concern with the same. I have passed down on Mill Branch Avenue several times, and I have seen the staff, the maintenance staff, at Davis Ballpark, cleaning up the ballpark. And I wanted to ask a question about, why would there be staff members cleaning personal property? Isn't Davis Ballpark personally considered as personal property?
Davis Ballpark?
Mm-hmm.
No, we've, uh, entered into agreement with, um,
Uh-huh, maybe Davis and Tri- County Baseball League.
The Tri-County Baseball League.
Mm-hmm.
So that, um, the little leaguers here in Shottsburg will be able to use that field, uh, for, you know, little league ball practice.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the agreement, uh, we just done this recently. In the agreement, the town of Shottsburg will be responsible for maintenance of the field, so that can utilize the field.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're gonna install some lights at the field so they can have some night games for the kids. They'll u- utilize that field, and Coop, uh, Cooper's Ball Field, and vice versa, for the league. Matter of fact, I just got a paper tonight, what's the, the, uh, team vote?
Sharpberg Littles.
Yeah, it'd be called the Sharpberg Littles.
Okay, but still, isn't it con- considered as personal property?
No.
To this day, even though you, you entered into a contract?
We have a, a, um, lease, um, twenty years. We have a, we have a twenty-year lease on that field, we, we actually only maintain that field for twenty years.
I've never seen anyone out there maintaining.
We just.
That's insane.
Yeah.
Okay, so you all just entered into a twenty-year agreement to main thing.
The, the agreement is, um, uh, I'm trying to remember the actual term of the main, that's, but there's a, the twenty-year window is tied to, uh, the team name, Sharpgrass, we get to, the team name after it, the Sharpsons, which is beside the mud. Um, but it provides, uh, basically grass cutting to the field, the league, uh, handles the actual operations of baseball games and everything else. Um, but the, you know, I guess they returned, they got a team name out up for a twenty-year period. Um, the, the town's obligation to maintain, I, I don't know that it extended beyond a year, I think that comes up in the rule.
So this team is just starting?
Yeah, it's, like I say, we just done this in the August meeting, August fourth, at one point.
So, so is there a baseball team at this particular time?
Yes, because they're signing up with, uh, what's the lady, Ms. Hedges? Ms. Hedges?
The same one that, um, your grandson plays with.
Yeah, I know, my grandson, he's been playing on that hill, but he doesn't play with the Shottsburg team. And I've never seen workers out there maintaining that, um, property up until just the last few weeks.
Right.
So that's, that's why I was asking, so you all now have a softball team?
Baseball.
Baseball.
We just signed it on August fourth with Ms. Hedges.
We wanted to see something like that in our community for the children.
Okay, so you telling me that if there's another team in the community that you all will maintain the property of where this team will, will own their games? We can come and ask you for a lease, for an agreement to maintain property?
If you ha- if you have a field, a regulation field like they have?
Okay, mm-hmm.
It, it would be, it would be considered by the board, that's all I can say.
Okay.
Like I said, this is brand new.
Okay.
This is, this is barely a month old.
Okay, I just wanted to know, because you all, you know, we are taxpayers, and I wanted to make them aware of this is how their money is being spent.
It's age, it's old.
On our children.
On our children.
On our children.
In the community.
Now, we used to have football.
Shark Church hasn't had a team for several years.
You remember the football team you used to have?
We really want to do something that they don't have far, that they have to go, for teams, you know, something here.
And I do want to mention, while all these citizens are here, the league has, um, sponsorships and, um, scholarships. If you know any children that cannot afford to do the enrollment fee, they have that available. I'd rather see them play involved than running up and down the street having nothing to do. And that's why the town is involved. So if y'all know anybody, please refer them to Diane Hedges, I have her phone number and contact information. Um, it's a good league, I'm sure Ms. O'Neill can speak on it, um, her son, grandson Marley, who is an awesome ball player, but hasn't played on it for years. Uh, if anybody's interested, I'd be glad to give y'all that information.
Okay, well, look, this is still pertaining to that. Although, when I passed there, it looked like there's several maintenance workers there. Why can't they be doing some other things, like cleaning out some of these ditches? So that we won't have the flooding around the town that we have? I mean, why have five or six maintenance workers out there cleaning that ball field?
I'm sure they originally, they're trying to get it in, in shape, because, you know, no one's being done.
Nobody's been cleaning the ditches in that area.
And I'm gonna have to disagree with that, Cheryl. This would have. And we cannot handle monstrous rain problems, but we all sitting here tonight a very blessed time. Because the hurricanes did not come here. But if we look around our neighbors, they did get it. There's no demon, there's no grugger. Nothing can hold back what came, if you love it. But I do know they have cleaned the ditches, cleaning the ditches, cutting the ditches, pumping out the, uh, uh, storm drains, without storm backruts, you know. But no, we cannot handle a heavy flow of water. When we get inches, inches per hour, we can't do it.
Okay, so if I bring you some pictures of some ditches that weren't clean?
I said working on the di- I didn't say we've done every ditch in this town. I said we're working on the ditches.
And plus, it depends on if it's our ditches.
And it has to be, you know, town, I can't go on private.
Most ditches in town are properly owned.
Can I get a list of the ditches that do not, that belongs to the town?
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. You finished?
Mr. Do.
Mr. Do, you were the talking list, come back up to the talking list now, Mr. Do.
Alright. Okay, my, my name is Ricardo Do, and I was here last month, uh, voicing my concerns, that I received a few calls. And now at this time, I have more questions than I've had answers. Now, you've heard the, you've heard from people who live here, their concerns and the issues that have been going on with them. And in no particular order, the towing that was done in July of Ms. Perry, if you look at section ten in the Room of Conducts and Duty Manual, it states that she, he or her can call the record of their choice, provided that it's done in a timely fashion, or does not call any undue burden on the police department or the officer. And in that case, it would not help because it was in a parking lot of a business. So, with that, actually, the car was actually towed illegally. So because of that, I would like, and I know she would like to request, that her car be returned to her with no financial burden on her. Because policy also states that a towing company has to be paid. If it's towed, and if it's done improperly, or if they go to court about it, then the police department is responsible for the keeping. Basically, the same thing, they had no right to tow her car. She should have been able to call her own towing service.
Cause I told Ms. Perry, and Commissioner Carter, let me check into it, I'll be a very busy man tomorrow, as you know. Let me check into it, and I'm gonna call Ms. Perry when I've got the facts, I've heard her side, I need to hear the police department's side, how long the commissioner's side, if he has not done this prior to tonight, I don't know.
Okay, well, I, not being rude, but I don't see, I don't see, I don't see a side. The issue is her car was towed, that's the side. There's proof that the car was towed, so what side you have to look at?
Chloe, I'm not gonna just say, I'm gonna give you a call back tomorrow morning. I'm going to talk with the department, and the chief, and the officer, okay? I'm not gonna make a decision tonight in the blind.
No, I'm not, ask you to make a, I know you're not gonna make a decision tonight.
Right.
But I, but that is what we are requesting, that that happen.
Well, when I, as I wanna say this one more time, when I talk with this department head and the officer, then I'll call Ms., Ms., uh, Perry, and let her know.
Okay, so I can put enough faith in that, as I did last month, when I was told that the chief would call me on a Thursday. And I've not heard from the chief, has still not yet called me to this very day.
Well, you say he didn't, he tells me he did. We had an interview, remember that?
We're not talking.
We ain't, that's right.
Yeah, that's right, okay.
Why don't look, you got a minute left, come on.
Okay, well, now, since the time is gone, there was another towing that was going on, but so, in respect of time, I will request that this commission and the police department set a meeting with not only myself, but these people who have brought complaints to you, read statements to you, to sit down and have an open dialogue about their concerns and their issues. So that way you will be on both sides, both the police department and them.
I, I don't feel comfortable having a meeting with five, six, seven, eight, nine, whatever, how many people, I would like to do it individually. I really don't want my business known by that person, or you.
Okay, okay, well, you know, the, the procedure also, procedures also say
I don't.
That you're supposed to have, that the police department is supposed to have community relations, supposed to meet with the community, so that can be done as a community meeting. I mean, you know, don't have to be done individually.
I, I, but this, this is a lot of community making.
I understand, I understand, I understand, we're, we're, we're on board.
And that's it, your free minutes, sir, so please have a seat, I've got a list of things I need to get on with, and I will, Mr. Jackson, sort of, of my ability.
Okay.
Starting tomorrow, right?
Okay, before I sit down, one question.
Is there any, I, I.
Please sit down.
Have a seat.
Mary Weaver, uh.
I have a question, but.
May I just ask? Can I have two minutes? I don't want, I don't want three minutes.
Nah, 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 nah. Mr. Do, sit down.
Can I get my stuff?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a good night.
No, 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 it's, okay, I got you. It's done.
I, I've sitting here, and I, and I took all this in, I think your problem is, you and the commissioners need to sit down with tenant record service, and y'all need, y'all need to talk about this, I'm not, I mean, I'm not understanding, you know, you know, you and I police together. And this personal cell phone call into one record service, you know that's illegal. All, you know, you know, you know, we, you know, in Rockmont, we could not do that, fire control can't do that, you know, this needs to be on rotation.
Yeah, rotation.
And if some, if somebody needs to call, if they say I can call a record service of my choice, you need to be able to do that, okay?
Alright, Ms. Parker.
I think that solved all these complaints that you got tonight.
Yep.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker, how about call Mr. Taylor sometime tomorrow, if you're going to his convention. And when I get through with my list, I'll contact you, alright?
Call him.
Just ask him when we can get together, I'd like to do this, if we want, probably, how long the chief.
And, Ms. Weaver, that's all I had to say, and I, I mean, the harm, done with that, but I think that, that would solve your problem, because I think it is Weaver, is a, Mr. Weaver is Taylor's garage, a substation for the police department, because every morning I go to the police, I go to the postal. He's got two cars there. So I think you need to, you need to, they need to distance himself and put him on rotation, and, and this to solve your problem, that's all I have to say this here.
Thank you.
Mr. Weaver, can I speak next?
Yeah.
Nah, I don't have to sign up. On your agenda, and thank you, please, before you come in. On the agenda, on the idle.